All the meeting to order. It's Monday, February 23rd, 2000, or February 20th, 2023. We'll start with roll call.
Carmen, Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
McConnell?
Greener?
President. Next is the consent agenda. We have number one, approval of the agenda. Number two, approval of the claims. Number three, approval of minutes from February 6th, 2003. And number four, approval of Class E retail alcohol license, LE2, Remark 22 LLC, doing business as The Ox and Ren Spirits and Gifts.
So moved.
Second.
Busca?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Next is staff reports. We'll start with Public Works.
We had another water main break last, I believe it was Thursday, on Fourth Street West between Second and Third Avenue. Not much to it, just pretty straightforward. Wasn't anything too bad. And then today I got a call from Perry Novaks regarding that stoplight pole down there. The pole's supposed to be in this week, so hopefully they'll get on that shortly and get that project wrapped up. The street guys have been busy cleaning and televising some of our storm sewers around town that we've had some issues with, where the road's starting to sink. And I think in the near future, we'll have some spots that will need immediate attention. I think we can wait till the summer, but Dean's pretty concerned about a few spots. And then today I went down to Sleepy Hollow to start pricing out a different vehicle for me. One of the things that they brought up is they have a vehicle on the lot that is the exact same thing that I would order, but it would save the city roughly $10,000 if we would take that one over ordering one in 2023. I don't know what you guys' thoughts are on that, but I just wanted to bring it to you guys' attention.
This is a van or?
It'd be a truck. Four-wheel drive.
And then trade in the Traverse or keep it or not sure?
The parks would buy that.
Parks would buy that.
Yep, I talked to Brandon last, he wants it.
Okay.
But a truck doesn't really help going to meetings in Des Moines and...
It's a crew cab pickup with a 2.7 motor in it.
Oh, yeah.
What kind of miles? Mile per gallon?
I'd have to look, but I know it's better on Traverse.
Too bad, yeah. It's a little four-cylinder with a turbo on it there.
Right.
Yep, yep.
Is this a half-ton pickup?
Yes.
They're pretty spunky.
Yeah.
Four-wheel drive?
Four-wheel drive, correct.
So, yeah, those are, those were good value. Those were good. So you're saying buy that one now versus wait till the 2023 budget year? Because we had one budgeted in.
Correct, yeah. Yep, and it would save us roughly $10,000 on going that route rather than ordering one.
So I'm in the process of working on a budget amendment right now. So we would just have to amend this year's budget, and then we'd be able to remove it from next year's, since we haven't finalized that yet.
They give you a price of what we could expect out of that unit you're driving now?
7,000.
7,000?
Yep, 7,000 trade, yep. So the price for this truck out the door with our municipal discount is 36,285.
Must be pretty bare bones then.
Truck edition, yep, four-wheel drive. I mean, it has a few options.
Is Ford or Chevy?
Chevy.
Chevy?
Yep. And then 7,000 would come off of that one, we sell the Traverse as well.
Sure.
All right. Do we need a motion for anything there or shall we?
I would like, we can't officially make a motion, but I guess I would like your feelings for it if you do want us to proceed with it. Then you approve it when we do our budget amendment, which will be coming through in a month or two.
Did you give him a timeline? I mean, he's gonna probably want an answer, otherwise it's...
I did not. I said that I would take it to you guys and discuss it and let him know either way, so...
I suppose if somebody walks in, buys it, nevermind.
Absolutely, yep.
What do we have budgeted for that, or did we have a figure?
45,000.
Forty-five?
Yeah.
So we're in now at, with trade-in or not trade-in, but selling the element on 30?
Right.
We don't have to pay tax being a city, do we?
Correct.
All right. I guess I'd be in favor of getting the wheels in motion on something like that.
I would too. What was that?
I'm sorry, I just wouldn't want to ride the Des Moines in the back of a crew cab.
There's probably more room back there than the back of the Traverse.
Mm-hmm.
For legs and legroom especially.
And you're getting, that would be with the step?
Correct, yeah.
So that helps for getting it in.
I mean, we'll still have the Traverse too, I guess, right? The city will.
Correct, yeah, the parks will.
Yeah, we could get it back, use it from the park.
Okay. Without noted lack of enthusiasm.
All right, thank you.
And that's all I have.
Okay. Chief, do you have anything to report?
I have nothing to report.
Okay. Administration.
As of right now, we are still on for the informational meeting on Wednesday, the 22nd, at 5:00 for the upcoming projects. If that changes, we will let people know as soon as we know. Bids are due on the 27th for the water tower project, and we'll award the bid on March 6th.
Committee reports.
Howard County Economic Development met last Wednesday. There's a big fish fry in Elma on the 10th of March. I put up a poster on the bulletin board. The clinic expansion is going forward, and I think they're breaking ground in April, and everybody's looking forward to that. I was kind of surprised when Jason told us that Cabin Coffee, which I'd never heard of, but which apparently is a thing, is coming to town by Howard County Mutual, and that's starting soonish, right?
Yeah, Gary's ready, stealing his thunder there, but yes.
Open, open polish. The Panda Garden is reopened, and Good Times is looking to open May-ish or so, and that's it.
Okay.
JM gave a report for the library. They hired Kim Witt to fill Rhonda's position as the new children's librarian. There's income tax preparation help available at the library through April. Howard County Supervisors will be touring the library in April. Patsy will be writing an article for the paper, letting people know what the Library Foundation is and their function. They're planning on being a little bit more of a community presence. They also have a brochure that they'll be giving to attorneys for estate planning.
Are they planning to be open to the public? I don't know.
No. I guess I'll just stick with it.
But I'll try to get through this. The Oneyoza Film Festival came over to the theater. That was a great success. Gosh is currently working on installing the furnaces. When they opened up one of the furnaces, they found out it had a cracked heat exchanger, so that was a great thing to get rid of at the time. And they're currently working with U and I Outreach Program for shared programs that are going to be in our area that we can go back and forth with them. So a lot of good things coming up, and there's several live theater events coming up here in April and May.
Okay. Anybody else?
Jimmy pretty much cleaned up everything I had, so...
All right. Any comments from the audience about anything that's not on the agenda? If not, we'll move on to our regular business for tonight. Number one, the public hearing on the authorization of a loan agreement and the issuance of not to exceed $4,600,000 in general obligation capital loan notes for essential corporate purposes to evidence the obligation of the city thereunder.
And there were no written objections.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. Number two, resolution instituting proceedings to take additional action for the issuance of not to exceed $4,600,000 in general obligation capital loan notes.
So moved.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Okay. Number three, resolution authorization authorizing the issuance of general obligation capital loan notes, Series 2023, and levying a tax for the payment thereof.
So what that means is that allows us to levy for that first debt payment that will be due in June of 2024, so we can add it to our tax asking that we're doing right now with the budget.
Any motions?
So moved.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Number four, resolution authorizing mayor to enter into financial services agreement with Piper Sandler and Company. So moved.
Second. Greener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number five, resolution authorizing mayor to enter into an agreement to serve as dissemination agent for secondary market disclosures with Piper Sandler and Company. So moved.
Second. Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Number six, review stump grinding quotes and possible award of contract.
I sent out four, I got two back. I got Wilson Custom Tree at 87 cents per inch, and then Walton Tree Service at 89 cents per inch. So based off those, I would make or recommend going with Wilson with the lower bid.
We've had this before we get into that. I mean, when we grind these stumps, and this is a pet peeve of mine, when you grind a stump, you do more than just knock the top off.
Correct.
You gotta get down.
They go down along those.
Get the roots and dig down and do a thorough job.
Yeah, most of the time if they don't, and they start cleaning them up, then they'll make them come back and finish grinding it.
Just as long as we're in agreement that they're gonna get in and do a decent job on these boulevards, so...
So the recommendation to go with the low bid?
That'd be Wilson, you said, at 87?
Correct.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Busca?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number seven, resolution authorizing the mayor and city council representatives to sign an agreement in accordance with the terms agreed to in negotiations between the City of Cresco and local 1068 American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees,
Just clarifying, that's a 3% raise in July, 1st of July, and a 3% raise on the 1st of January, right?
Yep.
Okay, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Number eight, resolution approving wage agreement for full-time, non-union employees. So moved.
Second. Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Number nine, resolution approving wage increase for specified permanent part-time Yep, that's all the list of that, yep.
And this is, just so the City Hall, library castle, custodian, airport manager, and fire chief. I'll make that motion.
Second it.
Greener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number 10, third reading of summary of proposed ordinance 502, which amends Chapter 106, Sections 106.04 and 106.08, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Cresco, Iowa pertaining to fees for recyclable and non-recyclable waste. Be it enacted by the City Council of the City of Cresco, Iowa as follows. Section 1, Sections Modified, Chapter 106.04 states that all solid waste shall be collected from residential premises at least once each week and from commercial, industrial, and institutional premises as frequently as may be necessary. Section 106.08, subsection 1, lists the fees that will be charged effective January 1st, 2023. Solid waste for residential is $22.21 per month per dwelling unit, with an asterisk that says where at least one resident residing in a dwelling unit is over 65 years of age, the fee is $21.35 per month. Recycling for residential is $6.15 per month per dwelling unit. Solid waste light commercial is $27.53 per month. Recycling light commercial is $7.63 per month. Heavy commercial customers, $20.35 per cubic yard per pickup. Additional fees incurred for non-compliant content or as posted on rigid containers will be billed by the collector. Heavy commercial cardboard, January 1st, 2023 through December 31st of 2023, heavy-duty commercial customers with existing cardboard dumpster will pay $100 a month for a two-yard dumpster, $125 per month for a three-yard dumpster, $150 per month for a four-yard dumpster, and $200 per month for a six-yard dumpster. There's a one-time stocking fee for placement of new additional cardboard dumpsters. Two-yard dumpster is $300, a three-yard dumpster is $375, a four-yard dumpster is $450, and a six-yard dumpster is $600. Plus fees incurred for non-compliant content and dumpsters to be billed by the collector. All rates will increase by 4% January 1st for the next four years, ending December 31st, 2027. Section 2, severability clause, if any section, provision, or part of this ordinance shall be adjudged invalid or unconstitutional, such adjudication shall not affect the validity of the ordinance as a whole or any section, provision, or part thereof not adjudged invalid or unconstitutional. Section 3, when effective, this ordinance shall be in effect from and after its final passage, approval, and publication as provided by law.
So moved.
Second.
Busca?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
And that was number 11, then, approval of the ordinance 502 pertaining to fees as recyclable and non-recyclable waste?
That was for the...
That was for the third reading, okay. So then next would be the approval of the ordinance 502 pertaining to fees for recyclable and non-recyclable waste.
So moved.
Second.
Busca?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Number 12, recommendation of the Board of Adjustments to reappoint Emily Dolman-Govern for a term of three years expiring 6/30 of 2025. So moved.
Second. Busca?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Number 13, recommendation of the Board of Adjustments to reappoint Kevin Wynott for a term of three years expiring 6/30 of 2025. So moved.
Second. Fortune?
Yes.
Greener?
Yes.
Busca?
Yes.
Number 14, discuss potential legislative changes to the property tax system and local option sales tax.
So Senate File 181 has been passed. We are now just waiting for the governor to sign it into law. What this does is it corrects an error made by the Iowa Department of Revenue when they were calculating the taxable valuations for the rollback. So basically, what it will do is reduce our taxable valuations for fiscal year '24, which is the budget we have been working on for the last four months. So, that being said, they have extended our budget deadline till April 30th. So I have halted publishing in the newspaper because if we would have set our maximum levies, then we may have been locked in at those rates. So I am waiting to, well, the counties have to wait for the governor to sign it, then they will go forward, get new valuations, get that sent out, then we have to recalculate everything. At that point, I will let you know what that does to our revenue. Our valuations had already decreased before this. They're guessing, estimating valuations to decrease about 1.8% this year, and probably around another 4% next year. So that's about 6%. That's why they're making it active this year, so that they spread it out, so it's 2% this year and 4% next year, not the big 6% next year. But it's making havoc on everybody working on their budgets. So I'll keep you posted once I get the new figures, and we'll see if we need to go back in and make any adjustments or cuts. The other legislation that they are, I think it's in the subcommittees and Ways and Means, is SSB 1124. This is gonna have several different impacts on the cities. It's gonna eliminate some of our levies, including the emergency levy, the theater levy, and several other ones. They combine them together, and then they have this nice complicated calculation. Basically, what they're doing is they are trying to get all the cities down to 810 with all the combined levies. So once you get down to the 810, you're never allowed to go above it again. We're at 8.505 right now, so we'd be losing, you know, 4 tenths of a, once we get down to the 810. It also puts limits on the valuation increases, so both of those things are really gonna impact our future revenues from property taxes. There's also an SSB 1125. Again, this is in the committees and things. They're talking about rolling back commercial and industrial from 90% to 80%. They will not backfill it this time. Last time, you know, when was it? Eight years ago, whenever they did it, they went from 100% down to 90%, and they gave us a backfill. Now, of course, they're eliminating the backfill on that. So within a 10-year period, we're going from 100% down to 80% on commercial and industrial properties. Huge impact on all cities across the state and counties. So that's a huge thing. They're making the homestead tax credit and the veterans property tax credit, which are both great credits. The state used to fund those. Now with this bill, they would take it away from the cities and the local governments. So your county school, cities are gonna have to pay for those credits instead of the state. They are also talking about taking control of the local option sales tax, that 1% tax. If they do that, that just scares everybody. That is the extra funding that everybody gets, and that is what we use for any of our projects, equipment, anything. Supposedly, they would give the money back, but we all have seen time after time of, once they get control of the money, they reduce how much they give back, and then they prorate it, so you're small populations, we're not gonna get it, you know, where the money's gonna go. So very scary. It's across the board, everybody is freaking out about that. So we would lose our local option sales tax, Howard County would. Howard County puts quite a bit into our library of their local option sales tax. So we get a double whammy if that goes away, they aren't gonna have possibly as much loss to give to our library either, so... This is the time to be talking to legislators. It's crazy. And then there's other bills, the SSB 1138, that they think will cost local budgets $5.4 million across the board of increasing the military property tax credit. So it's scary, and we're losing control is what it feels like.
Well, and the interesting thing was Senator Clemish and Representative Bergen, and I will give Representative Bergen credit, he called Michelle and talked to her, and he's been responsive. They had a town hall meeting at the Farm Bureau, and I asked them how in the heck they expected cities to thrive if your revenues are capped at a 2.5% growth and there's no cap on your expenses. And I asked them if they were going to then go to the union and say, "You can only get 2.5% per year," into a line and say, "You can only raise your rates 2.5% per year." And they did not say they were gonna do that. They kept saying, "Well, we understand, but that doesn't help if you pass the bill." There is a non, there is, there is a bill, thank you, that is not the same but is intended to accomplish the same thing in the House. So first, they have to reconcile those. So I've heard a version that says it won't pass this year, but it will pass next year. But who knows? I just think it's inevitable that if this passes and there's this cap, I mean, and we try not to spend more, we don't wanna see our tax levy go up, but what's paid for out of this part of the levy is police, the law enforcement center, fire, library. The two big are police and law enforcement plus library, that's almost 75%. Theater, park, fitness center, and admin, and something left over that's like nothing. So it's just, it's inevitable that if this passes, not immediately, but inevitably, we will have to start cutting those services. So if anybody out there doesn't want that to happen, you need to call Representative Bergen and Senator Clemish, or email them, or whatever, and say, "You, this can't happen." And the reason that they gave for doing this is because they heard that some city somewhere in Iowa gave their employees a 10% raise, and as a result, at least this is what they're saying, they're going to nail every city and every county in Iowa. So please don't just be appalled. Call them. Thank you.
Thank you, yep. And that was SSB 1125?
Well, it depends.
Just for the viewing audience, so they...
What I said, that's SSB 1124.
1124.
1125 is the lost. It's statutory that they're gonna have to backfill it. Now, as Michelle was saying, they've figured out their way around that before. But the one that concerns me, I mean, I think everybody is gonna fight so hard against the lost. It's like, what part of local are you having trouble with? But I think 1124 is gonna pass this year or next year. And I just don't understand how they expect that to work. In your household, if you were, well, and that's what we're all feeling, you know, with inflation, it's not like Social Security's going up, but eggs are going up. Well, that would be the whole city.
How much do we get from our local option sales tax each year roughly?
$580,000 is what I have budgeted.
And I'm guessing if the state would take that money, they're not gonna give it all back, otherwise they wouldn't take it, right?
Actually, I mean, the statute says that that's what they're gonna do.
Really?
But they're gonna give it to the one, the communities that don't have it, so if they're collecting the same amount...
But in Howard County, I think that all of the communities and the county have it, don't they?
Right, but who's to say they're gonna give 100% of Howard County back to Howard County?
Actually, I think it says that there is...
Will it be allocated? I don't know.
We, yeah, we have to, this is, this law is like really long, and I'm not sure...
It'll probably change ten times.
It is tough to tell. We can't live without the $500,000.
Right, right.
That's what lost pays for fire trucks and library windows and theater improvements and...
Yeah, right.
Things we want to happen, and the fitness center, and you can tell we're really upset about this.
Any other thoughts or discussion on that? Okay. Next is number 15, discuss upcoming expiration of the urban renewal areas for TIF.
So I believe it was at the last meeting, I handed out some information. I don't know if everybody's had a chance to look at it. Just wondering where you wanna go with it, because if we don't want it to expire and we possibly want to qualify this project towards it, then we need to start moving on it. If you want to just sit back and wait, we probably have a year before they do expire, but then our chance of qualifying the Seventh Street project for it would be gone, so...
How much does it cost to keep it from expiring?
So that's the question. I do not know the answer to, because it will take some research and quite a bit of attorney time to do it. But I guess they did not give us a dollar amount for it.
So can we re-up the ones that were under, the 10-year, is that, that's the ones we're worried about, right?
The ones we're worried about are the ones that had originally, before 1994, were been created. were been created, that did not have expiration dates on them. Because what we did back in two thousand and eleven was we combined everything. So, when we made that amendment and the city combined it all into one, then all of a sudden you lose your no-expiration date. And so, that's where it's the gray line of whether you can be grandfathered in, carve back out the stuff and say, "Oops, we really didn't know what we were doing. We didn't mean to put that into that." Combine them is basically what we would be doing. If they expire, what you do is you'll lose your frozen base. So, if development has happened since they were originally created, then you would lose that increment, the amount that had increased. Because then when you... If you were to go back in and create a new area, your base would be up higher. So, I know there was a lot of information I gave you. I just don't know how to proceed, and I just don't want us just not to talk about it again ever.
Sure.
Go ahead, Gary. I'd like to get a quote on going forward. I mean, it's hard to commit... I really would like to preserve the base, but if it's a hundred thousand dollars, no. But if it's five thousand yen, absolutely.
And how long would it be good for?
So, if we can carve that back out, then those would not expire.
Never. It's kind of a one-time...
So, it's just a small section of our overall, but at least we would have some. A lot of the downtown was in that original, and out in the industrial was in that. So, if you guys want me to, I will contact Aaron again at Allers and Cooney and just have him kind of give us an idea of what the steps would be and the cost. But we are kind of interested in looking.
With the way this is going with all these revenues, we're going to almost need that stuff for projects going forward. I mean, five, ten, fifteen years down the road. So, a decision we make today or this year...
Good impact. Say, I will get an estimate, and then we'll talk at the next meeting.
Sure. Sure. All right, thank you. Number sixteen. Resolution authorizing the mayor to sign a letter of intent to participate in an application with the Iowa Economic Development Authority for a theater dash-community catalyst building remediation program grant for the Cresco Theater and Opera House. Is everyone moved? Second.
Fortune?
Yes.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Number seventeen. Resolution authorizing Martin Gardner Architecture to proceed with phase two of the Scene Shop construction project. Any...
The number is higher than prior, but if you look at the numbers, it includes bid letting and other things. So, depending on where we are with the grant, we may not need all of the money that they're asking for. I did go ahead and apply for a community foundation grant as well, and based on, we have a really good chance at getting the money from the catalyst grant, and I'll apply for anything and everything that I can. So, we just... We have a really good chance at this, so I'm really hopeful, and we have a lot of positive momentum now. We had a great season last year. I'm being contacted by some really fun groups, and I had the turns on down because we just don't have the access to the stage. The Tom Petty group we had last fall, we lifted some incredibly heavy equipment onto that stage that we shouldn't have been picking up. So, if we have safe access to the stage with a safe lift and covered access to the stage, we have a lot of potential for some really good money-making events of the theater.
Okay. Any other thoughts or questions?
Someone?
Second.
Kreener?
Yes.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes. I'm going to have to sneeze here. Hang on. Number eighteen, the last one. Discuss STBG funding and swap funding opportunities for possible motion to apply for a grant. Do you have anything you want to talk about or add, or any thoughts or questions?
I think I talked to most of you guys about it. Wendy's right. I think we do have a really good chance on the theater community grant. I don't know if we have a good chance on this one, but we know the chance if we don't.
Right.
So...
Right.
That's always the rule or thumb that we live by, and we know the answer if we don't ask.
Yep. Yep. The one that we're talking about now, we would know pretty soon if we choose to do that. Is that correct?
Yeah. I mean, what I've been talking to, and I'll be with in front of the supervisors tomorrow, if you guys want to move forward here, is they would meet in the middle of March to decide on their...
Nick said they haven't said it, though.
They have not said it.
That was just...
Nick told me...
March sixteenth was when they met last year.
Correct. Yep. They have not said it.
Then there may be some additional costs if the grant is given. Is that correct because of that?
So, there'll be additional engineering for sure, because what will happen is the plans would all go to the Iowa DOT, and then they would make them make some modifications because everything has to be in their format so that it's the same across the state. So, you have to follow all the Iowa DOT bidding specifications. So, the most likely be quite a... Could be substantial engineering additions there. There'll also be, if we get the funding, it would be federal funding. Therefore, the contractor would have to follow all of the federal reporting requirements. And so, historically, they say you can add about ten percent to your construction bid if it's federally funded, just for the additional stuff for the contractor to do. The engineer also has to send in all of their reports to the Iowa DOT, so there'll be additional engineering for that, for the reporting to the Iowa DOT. And then, there's no way that we'd be able to go out for bids for the project to be done this summer if we got the grant because of the DOT bid letting specifications. So, it would have to be postponed till next summer. And so, possibly inflationary costs. You're taking a risk on the inflation. I don't know if it'll go up or down.
The thing that concerns me, we really don't have a good figure on what the federal costs are going to be for these guys doing the work. I know that when you get federal money on jobs, it drives up your labor cost. I mean, it's more involved than... I mean, I understand where this is going. I think it's a good deal, but there's so many variables, so many costs out there, we don't know. I mean...
I agree with you. We talked about that, but I think you are meeting the ADA requirements, which is the biggest cost driver on all of those, unless I'm wrong, and you're not meeting those with this project. But I think that was your whole...
But that's what's driving this whole project is the ADA.
So, you already got that accounted for. Yes, your costs would go up, and yes, you wouldn't do it this year. That's why when I proposed it to Nick, I said, "There's got to be a number that makes sense." You ask for a little bit, that doesn't make sense to the city. You ask for too much, then we can guarantee that the county isn't going to buy it either. They're not going to support it. So, what is that sweet spot of a number? We kind of agreed on two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. So, that just happens to be exactly what or close to it where you're at right now for assessments downtown on businesses. And so, that looked like a nice trade, so to speak. That's where I was at on this, trying to find money to assist our businesses downtown. Forty-eight different property owners down there in businesses, right? Like I said, there's no guarantee we get it, but if we do, then yeah, there's the drawbacks. You get a little... You get more in the fees, and you don't get it done this year.
Will your net fee... Will your net gain be two-hundred-and-fifty thousand, or will it be a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand? We don't know those numbers.
We don't.
And then you sit here...
It won't be two-fifty, though. I do know that.
Well, I mean, but in the end result, the big picture, we get two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars to push this project back a year, but we incur additional costs that... So, our net gain is a hundred-and-seventy-five thousand.
That's what I'm saying. Your net gain will not be two-fifty.
Yeah. What was the total cost again on it? Was it nine-hundred?
About eight-hundred thousand is our estimate.
And if...
Go ahead.
If we do believe ten percent more because of the federal part, that's eighty thousand, then?
Plus the year's delay, which is...
Plus engineering.
So, you're probably looking at...
Maybe half of the two-fifty, maybe?
Least, I guess.
It's not a given we're going to get either at this point.
Absolutely not. County has to really support it. This is a federal money that comes to our region every year. City of Cresco doesn't have a seat at that table. Michelle's gone down that road before, and when you don't have a seat at that table, it's pretty much a dead end.
I did some asking. They've been doing it this way for about thirty-some years. What used to happen was the federal government used to give the federal funding directly to the county and then any city over five-thousand population. So, when they created this region, they call it now, they kept the same rules. Nick does not know if they have to stay with the five-thousand population being represented on the board. But what does happen is they get some of the federal funding that is for cities over five-thousand. So, that's why Decore and O'Line get a chair in this voting process. So, they get a little pot that's just for cities over five-thousand. So, they're the only two that can use that little part of the money, and then the rest is for the counties. So, then, any city under five-thousand population is included in the county. So, the smaller cities in Winnebago County, they'll take away from the Winnebago allocation. That's why we take away from the Howard County. So, what money we get, Howard County does not get.
The other thing that you brought up, I guess would have come from Nick or somebody, that because of the federal reporting requirements, it probably locks out some of the smaller contractors. And I guess it would become essentially the two big ones that always apply for concrete work, whereas smaller ones could do it without that.
There's always the question, "Will we get any small ones?"
Yeah.
You don't know?
True, you don't know.
The engineers said because we're breaking it into like phases and you don't need the big street equipment, that they could see some smaller contract... Concrete contractors bidding on it. He said if you had like six people in your employment, he goes, "You could easily do these projects." So, there's a possibility we could get smaller ones if there's not federal funding requirements, but maybe not to. I don't know. Another question.
Right. What is the timeline if we get the grant? Is the money guaranteed to us next year then, or it could be anywhere between now and when?
Yeah. It could be twenty-twenty-four, could be twenty-twenty-five, could be twenty-twenty-six.
Can they tell you at the time when it is?
Yep. They've got it all. I mean, like I told all you guys, they've got it mapped out for how many years in advance. They've got their programs figured out. So, you know, they... Two-hundred-and-fifty thousand that I was proposing was not a huge number in their grand scheme of projects that they do, because they like to share their projects and do a two-million-dollar project here. It makes a bigger impact for them, and they actually get something done. So, there may be some discretionary funding there. I don't know that. Like Nick told me, he goes, "I don't even know what all the other applications are going to be. Is anybody else going to throw in an application?" Now, if every community wants to think, "We'll never throw an application," and if we want to kill the application before we throw it to them, you know, and that's where I look at it. And, you know, I kind of figured Cresco's part of Howard County, too. So, it'd be nice to be able to throw it at that. There are projects that are happening and have happened in the past that could have qualified, but don't meet that timeline of what projects they want to do, push it out there. I'm appreciative of any money that goes towards infrastructure.
Right.
Love it. Love it. That's why I have no problem with that down there. If we can lessen the load that's going to be borne by our businesses, though, I'm all for that, too. And to the point of how much are we going to get in net? I don't know. You tell me what it is that you don't want to see as a net benefit to our businesses. I don't know. It's under a hundred thousand? Maybe not. If it's more than a hundred-and-fifty, or a hundred-and-seventy-five, or two-hundred? I don't know.
If we go for the grant and we get the grant, is it up to us to determine how it's spent?
Yep.
But I think you pretty much should... Are going to need to know how you're going to spend it when you go and you talk and you try to convince Howard County supervisors to support it, and then when you go in front of the five county supervisors that are voting on it and the two mayors, I think you're...
You should know.
You should know, and I think that's probably what they're going to base it on, is how we're going to use the funds.
So, if we were to apply for the grant, and let's say we receive it in two thousand and twenty-six, would we still go forward with the project next year, or would we wait till two thousand and twenty-six?
Well, if you got awarded the grant, you'd have to wait until you got the money, because you can't do a project until...
But Dave's question would be, can you just turn the grant down at that point? Sure.
Right. But then, by then, you've missed the bidding window for this year. So, you're still postponing it one year with no...
Do we know what our bidding window is right now as far as how long?
I mean, if we could guarantee that they were going to meet on March sixteenth of this year and make their decision, we could possibly still be able to bid it out this year. What the engineers said, you're kind of getting later. Possibly, we could bid it out and say, "You do part of the project in the north half of it, fall of twenty-three, and the spring of twenty-four, you do the other," if we were... Did not get the bid or get the grant.
What I was wondering was, do we just move forward with seeing what the possibilities are with the grant? But if it's going to put us out and we have to wait three years to do the project, we know that our property owners downtown don't want that. They've been quite vocal about it. But if we go through and do the process for the grant and see if we can't get it, and then if it doesn't fall into our bidding time period where it's going to take and put us off it because we're waiting to find out about this grant, can we say, "No, we're not going to do this. It's too far out," and go back? Not go back, but just plan on still bidding it, but then have set a hard cutoff that if we don't hear back about the grant...
But if we go out for the bids, then all these people are spending hours and hours creating this bid, and then...
No, no, no. I'm saying...
We can't accept their bid if we get federal funding. We can't go out for the bidding process.
If we're thinking it's going to be March sixteenth that we would hear back about the grant, or potentially about the grant, then we know that we have until March thirty-first to start sending the bids out or request for bids out. Can we say, "Okay, we haven't heard by the sixteenth. We're going to send it out on the thirty-first, no matter what?"
So, the application is due February twenty-eighth to apply for the grant. So, if we can get Upper Explorer Land to schedule the date that they're going to award the bids or the grants, then maybe we could. But I don't know if we can force them to set the date for us. I don't know.
And I wouldn't expect them to set the date just for us, but I'm thinking...
But we're not going to know.
We don't want to twiddle our thumbs, and if we know that this is the last date that we can wait to get the bids out yet this year because we haven't heard about this grant, we just say, "Okay, we don't know. We're going to go ahead and plan on doing this without the grant at this..." Because we can turn it down.
So, that's the big question, but contractors right now, I mean, I think we're already late in the bidding process. I mean, it's a guess. If we go out for bids in May, are they all going to be too busy to do anything? I mean, we don't know. There's no right answer to that. There's no deadline of saying all the bids have to be out by April first. That's not set. It's what do your contractors have scheduled, and what... How committed are they already? Are they bidding on other jobs? Because we didn't submit... Because we didn't submit this, so now they're gonna go for a job off in New Hampton and.
They didn't do any of the bids. They're hungry. We just don't know.
Yeah, it could go either way. It could help or hurt.
Could go up or down.
So when the, when the group meets on a particular day, say March 16th, if that's the day, do they decide that day?
That's what Nick told me. And I was like, well, we wanna know real quick and we wanna know if they found room to make it happen in 2024. That would be phenomenal. You know, I mean, I told every one of you guys, we, we were talking about this before the Sesquicentennial. You know, Stephen Carville sat right in front of us all and wanted to do this. He didn't want people downtown walking around with that. We kicked the can a long time. I'm glad you guys are not wanting to kick the can anymore. That's awesome. But at what point do you kick it another year for a certain amount of money? That's all I'm trying to do here, folks. I'm not trying to upset your apple cart, but I saw a potential opportunity for $250,000 to come back to our businesses. Thought it was worth investigating.
Right. Okay.
Exactly what happened on the Catalyst Grant.
Yep.
So I think there's a couple of major issues that you need to decide how much you're gonna ask for. Because 250 is just a number pulled out of the sky.
Well, it's, it's in talking with Nick about what makes it worthwhile to slip through and what makes it too much that he totally puts his foot down. Because when I said, well, if we ask for a million, he goes, well, yeah, well now then I'm pushing my projects off a year. You know, because he goes, I, I get, like Michelle was saying, I get X number and if you guys take it as Cresco, that counts to me. That counts to Howard County. So that's, that was in his and my conversations to say, what's way too much that you totally lose your turning line? What's a number that is big enough so that the cost of the DOT letting is doable versus, I, I don't want to ask for 70,000 if that's what it raises because of DOT. He totally understood that. He beat us all to that punch. I mean, he does this for a living. What could you possibly live with, Mr. County Engineer? Our discussion was 250,000. That's what it came to. So.
And 200?
That's the first question. The second question is what you're gonna use that proceeds for. So if you're gonna promise these voting people that you're gonna give it all to reduce the assessments downtown, then the city is picking up a whole lot of extra cost. You're gonna pick up all of the extra cost, the 100,000 here if you're gonna give the whole grant to them. So now all of a sudden the city goes backwards.
Just going off round numbers, at 48 businesses at $4,000 each for assessment, that's $192,000. If we go ahead and put this off one year at a 10% increase in bids, that puts us at $170,000 of that, 250,000 that would go back to the business owners. And that won't cut their assessments. That won't cover it. We're gonna, we'd, we'd already be going backwards if we waited a year.
So some of the assessments are like 28,000. So, yeah, 4,000 is the minimum.
But looking, just looking at the round numbers, that's not, I mean, we're gonna go backwards before we even begin. And we couldn't promise the businesses that we could cover their assessments at that point.
That's what I'm saying. I, I don't think you can give 100% to the business owners and feel good about applying for this grant. Because I think the city is taking a hit on it then.
And then if we get pushed out to 2025, be another 10%, 2026, another 10%. That's, it's just taking that grant money. We would have to ask for more than that to make it really flow out correctly. Just again, based off of round numbers.
So I've got a drop dead thing. I can live with pushing it off a year. But you're right, Jason. This has been around a long time. The sidewalks are not in good shape. We're putting our business owners on the hook for liability. If something happens, they own the sidewalks, not us. So.
Either you're both on the hook if something happens.
Well, we, we would get sued, but yeah.
Our crosswalks aren't any better. They're terrible.
I, I.
But you can play your inflation game starting 2005.
Yeah, but, but let's not talk about water that's already been under the bridge. I mean, I'm just saying, I'm offering my opinion that as far as I'm concerned, if it's not in 2024, it's, it's not a go. I've gone really back and forth on should it go to the business owners or should it go to the city? We've got people over on 7th Street that are getting nothing. People on the Granger Road, which was a farm-to-market road that in theory would have qualified, who got no help. And I guess where I'm ending up right now is if it goes to the city, it will reduce, what is it, the overall assessment? Because, I mean, it will reduce the assessment because the cost of the project is down, right?
No.
Oh, really? Why not?
Because the assessment's based on the cost of the project, not where your revenue is coming from.
Well, that?
You know.
Okay.
So the assessment is based off.
We can't base it on our net?
I mean, you can give them a break on it, but the assessment is based on actual cost. Has no bearing whether we get it from a bond or if we get it from our reserves or we get it from a grant. Their assessment's based on actual cost of construction and engineering and attorney fees.
I guess I, I would want to, in that case, pass on some of the, pass on the prorata savings. But if, with those conditions or thoughts, that's what I would vote for.
I don't know. I think you set precedent. If you, if you take the money and just give it to one specific group of people.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
And I, I just, I got, it's, it's tearing me up, this decision over this bit. We keep pushing this thing back. I don't see costs getting any, any better. Granted, you have to, you gotta go for where it's there, but we got no guarantees on nothing other than costs are gonna go up. That's the only guarantee we got that I see. So.
Well, I mean, I think we should apply. And maybe split it into, you know, this fall and next spring. And, and before we go on, I want to say that I think Jason is a rock star for Glamananda.
But if we apply, we were probably not going to do it this year. The earliest we'd be able to do it would be next year. The only way we'd do it this fall is if we got turned down for the federal grant and we could continue on with what we've already got ready to go to bid. So I want to make sure that you realize, if you get the grant, there's no way we can do it before spring of next year.
And I'm.
So.
And that project has to be approached that once it starts, you haul the mail to get it done. I mean, we can't, we can't be setting these businesses down up there.
I would totally agree with that.
I mean, we gotta hit it and hit it.
Which is why I would also say, I don't see a little contractor coming in here. And if you do, it's gonna be a long project that's gonna make a lot of your business owners mad down there. You'd be better off, like Gary's saying, is get somebody in there and.
It's gotta be done that way. It's, the whole, the whole gist of this argument with this downtown is that people wanted to save parts of the sidewalk here and there. Well, you start hodgepodgeing around different chunks of concrete, just drive up your, your, your equipment cost, your man cost labor, you got a net gain of nothing. I mean, when they start, the way I envision this, they're gonna start on one end, they're gonna tear it off all the way through, have cement coming down one side and they're going back up the other. So at least half that main street is open for business, you know, at any time. Is that kind of been the initial thought of this whole project?
Otherwise it just won't be cost effective.
No. And anybody that's gonna bid it is gonna tell you the same thing.
And we, we believe this meeting may happen in the middle of March, but it's not a set date yet.
We have no idea. Nobody has estimated when, they, when we. My concern is with all this legislation problems that we're having, that those county supervisors may say, let's wait and see what happens with evaluations and everything right now. They may decide to wait till April or May before they meet because their application is for fiscal year 2027. So they have no reason to rush into this meeting. So they may want to have a better idea of what legislation is doing before they start allocating these federal funds between themselves. I, that's just my opinion.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
I'm not basing it on anything except my own opinion.
Who, who makes the decision when it's gonna be then? Is there one person that's, we're gonna meet this day then or?
For the meeting?
Yep.
I don't know.
Who knows?
Again, we don't sit at that table.
Yep.
I tried to call Aaron.
We haven't sent a grant through that either.
I tried to call.
We're supposed to meet with him at nine o'clock tomorrow morning. So I can ask Nick and Dean Eastman's the other one that sits on that board.
Right.
And I did ask Nick and he didn't know. I tried calling Aaron Deeter today with Upper Explorer Land, who's in charge of this, but they're closed today because of the holiday.
Oh, sure.
Aaron told me what Nick told me. Normally they meet in the middle of the month.
Okay.
I mean, your guys' standpoint, even if they told you no, I would love for them to tell you no. I would have loved for them to tell you no. Michelle, when you had the farm-to-market road, we talked you out of it, you know? So I'd love to pile up a bunch of no's. Your county seat.
Right.
Walkers in your same boat, you know? But none of you guys get to play at that federal funding level.
Who determines who gets to play? Is that a federal regulation?
It's their board. Their board.
You would think that they'd have the county seats for every one of those counties would have a spot there.
Like I mentioned to you guys when I talked to Nick about that before and I talked to Aaron about that before, I guess that was proposed. Kinda died. Imagine that.
Yeah. We don't get to play in their sand pile.
And I, I am appreciative for all that they do in those county roads. I think you could make some serious arguments if you want to go down that road though, of how many businesses, how many taxpaying citizens are being affected by a sidewalk project and a road project.
What's the total bucket of money, do you know, that they get to just?
This next year was like 3.9 or whatever. They adjust.
They just lowered it.
They'll up and down. Yeah.
So they're expecting to have, because they have a balance of about 900,000 built up from a little extra money than they had predicted. So they have about 900,000 kind of sitting there. So that's a little pot that would be available to us for '24 if they were to give us something. And they're expecting 2.4 million to be received in fiscal year '27. So it's that 2.4 plus the 900,000 is 3.5 million. They just lowered it, of course, on Friday, but, so they have 3.5 million.
Gotcha. And you feel if we were to make a decision tonight to move forward or that we would want to spell out that X amount may be going to the property owner's next amount to cover extra costs because of the grant?
I, I, that's been my conversation with Michelle. That's kind of what she's letting you guys know is that, you know.
But I don't want, I don't want to sell it as it's 100% going to the business owners if that's not what we're gonna use it for. So.
I think we've got to inform, if we're gonna move forward with it, I go, we ought to be able to tell Nick and Dean what it is.
Yep.
You know, and I'll put it on the application, which is all on one page.
Any other thoughts or questions, anybody? Any motions?
I put my thoughts on the table.
I didn't catch that.
I said, I put my thoughts on the table.
If we was looking at 500,000 that could be put into the project and we knew it was a go, I'd be all over it. But I'm, right now my thoughts are that we've got how many years invested in this? It's been foot behind. We've got our engineering costs. We've got stuff ready to go. I mean, where do you draw the line and just keep moving this stuff back? I know it's not gonna be a popular decision because this term $250,000 has been thrown around. I don't feel that that, this is gonna be the end figure. I think it's gonna be considerably less. But again, that's my, you know, we just, we're, we're sitting here basing all this on what if. So.
Let's go with the grant.
So it, so what you're saying is at what point does it become worth it? I mean, $100,000 is still $100,000.
Understood.
Except if it costs us $80,000 in the end, then that's.
But it's 250 minus the extra 80 for stuff and add another 20 just to be safe. So that's, now we're down to 150. Then you're waiting another year. So your construction costs increased by 10%. So now, let's see, you're down to 150 minus 80, you're down to 70. And that's the question. Is it worth it?
At, at that point in time plus, I mean, that, that's, that's kind of where I'm at is I'm looking at it from Gary's standpoint. We've waited so long. If we kick it down the curb another, well, another year. But just looking at the numbers, and I know Jason had come up with 250,000 with Nick, but in the end, when you look at the numbers versus what our expenses are going to increase by doing this, does it cash flow and does it make sense? And that's where I'm, I guess, I, this is, admittedly, this is the first time that I've really kind of broken down to look at it. And I, I don't think that 250,000 is gonna get us to where we need to be when it all comes down with the fees. And that's, if that's what the county is willing to give us, then it would be entertaining. I don't know that that's enough to make it worthwhile.
Well, but if I came to you and said, I'm gonna give you $80,000 to wait till next year to do it. Happy or not happy?
To the city or to the business owners?
No, I, I took, to me personally, that's off the table. It's to the city. Which I'm, I might be willing to give a little bit back on the assessments, but to the city.
One thing that, that, that we don't have good numbers on, but I know what's gonna happen is that this turns into a federal project and it's gotta have federal guidelines. The guys that come in and gonna bid it are gonna bid it way higher than if it's a local project, without a doubt. I, I've, just my limited background that I seen working in that business, I've seen it on the bike trails. I've seen it on, on road projects that when federal money's involved in stuff, all your wages go up.
Well, but.
If you even want to do it, you're not gonna like break my heart.
Yeah.
But you.
When I see a, a grant out there though, that I think in a plant or businesses in this town, my God, I don't know what you're paying me for, but I'm gonna bring it up.
Absolutely.
Keep doing that.
Yeah, but, but we've already got that 10% in. That's what Nick said. Nick told Michelle that he bid two projects that were essentially the same project.
Did 10% go into a federal?
And the, the federal cost him 10% more. So we've already, now we're down to $80,000 and is it worth it? And I think Jason made an incredibly important point, which was we need to get them to start saying no to show that we're interested and we think we have a call on some of this money. I would go apply for the effective $80,000 just to do that.
Make an ask for 330.
Uh, yeah, something like, you know, I, I guess I was thinking 300 was a nice number.
300.
If they came back with 250, I, and we could get it done in 2024. I, I'm like set on that because after that, your costs are going up so much, we're not worried about it. I'd be a real happy camper to have extra $80,000. Because I think that, I hadn't thought of that before, Jason. We've, we've let them slide by. You know, why was there nothing for the Granger Road, which is a farm-to-market road, where it was incredibly expensive for us? And so I went, I, I like the idea of getting them on the record as saying something.
Do you know, Michelle, if we did wait a whole new year, do we have to start the whole process over again with assessments?
I do not know that. I don't know. If we do not start the process over, then that preliminary assessment, which is their maximum they could be assessed, is still set. So if there's an increase in costs, the city's gonna bear all of that. I don't know if we can, at this point, scrap the project and then do new assessments with new preliminary assessments at that point. I don't know. But there's a darn good chance then that assessment dollar will go up because again, it's based on the cost of the construction. So their sidewalks now go up by 10%. So that 250,000 now is 25,000 more. And so if we don't start the project over, we would be eating all of that extra. And so if we don't start the project over, we would be eating all of that extra.
Geez, everybody keeps bringing up these really interesting points. You gotta stop that, you gotta stop that, um, because that's an important point. Not only is the cost going up for us, it's going up for the assessments. Tough one.
You're, you're one to two right now, so it ain't really gonna matter.
So you're against?
My, my feeling is that the project, we've gone through all this work, it just needs to go forward, if the way it's been laid out, but.
Alex?
Well, and I, I hate the fact that I'm even looking at it that way, but I'm with, with Gary, I don't, I, I want, you know, if I was working downtown and owned a business downtown, I would absolutely want that eighty thousand dollars. But if it means that we're gonna potentially start over, if it means we're gonna potentially be two years out or three years out, um, especially with the way legislation's going, because we saw what happened to our own situation, um, that's, those are two big things that push me against it, but, yeah. Would it be something we could ask for, say, three hundred and fifty thousand?
You can ask for whatever you want, you can ask for up to eighty percent.
So I had told Nick, I said, so what if I ask for five hundred thousand? Because in my head, if we're going for it, let's go for it. And he said, well, I was kind of reluctantly supporting you at the two hundred and fifty thousand. I'm much, much, much less supporting you at the five hundred thousand. So he didn't say he would be totally against us. And you have to remember, we do not need Howard County's letter of support or anything. All we have to do is inform them that we are applying. But I would guess that when it comes the day of voting, they're all gonna turn to Howard County, and they're gonna say, what do you think? Are you, should we give them part of your money? I'm guessing, I don't know exactly how it goes down, but.
Would that make a difference to anybody, if, if we went for more and got more, or not at all? There's just so many unknowns. I mean, that's, if it was clean cut, it'd be a totally different ballgame, but.
Like Nick said, you're convincing all these other counties to vote, yes, even if Howard County says, yeah, we're a hundred percent behind it. They say they don't wanna start giving their county money to these cities, because you know all the other cities are gonna be paying attention to this.
In the past, has the city ever gotten money, do you know?
Not exactly what I told Nick, what a great, honorable guidance you'd be giving to the rest of that board. What example you would be setting.
They want their money for bridges and culverts and road improvements and.
The eight million.
Those are all good.
Yeah, they, absolutely.
I can't argue with them.
Howard County needs it.
I also look at how many of the businesses are affected by a lot of those.
Yeah.
They've got millions of dollars in windmills that they've tiffed, too. Well, I'll make a motion. We asked for three hundred thousand dollars. We put it towards the city, and we say to ourselves that if we don't get it for 2024, if it, if the, we don't get it for the project to be done in 2024, then we turn it out, even if we get it.
And Nick said that you have to go in with, uh, what if they offer you two hundred thousand? Do you still want it?
No.
And so we, we have to set like a bottom?
Two hundred and fifty is my bottom, but I'd ask for three hundred. If Jason's counting, my motion will be shut down, but that's my motion.
Okay. Any other questions or discussion? If not, we'll roll call vote?
Wait a minute, we don't have a second.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, that's important, sorry. Is there a second to the motion? If not, that motion will die, and any other motions?
Make the motion that we go ahead with the project as was initially intended, um, and go forward with it.
Okay.
It's not gonna be a popular decision, I'm sure, but, again, there's too many variables, too many unanswered questions that, it's not gonna be a popular decision, but it is what it is.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm with Gary, I, reluctantly, I'm with Gary. Just too many unknowns, and the dollars amount just doesn't make sense. Okay. So you second his motion?
No, second, yeah.
Roll call vote?
Buska?
No.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greenard?
Yes.
Okay. Um, that last motion was carried. Thank you for your time, sir. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you for finding.
These guys, you're good. I'm just gonna keep bringing stuff to you.
Good.
I know one thing, I'm gonna try to get a seat at that table somehow, though, there's no reason that these.
Exactly, I would love to put a bunch of them in front and say no.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, I, to me, that point you made was incredibly important.
Motion to adjourn.
Thanks for what you do.
Yeah.
Thanks, Jason.
Motion made to adjourn, second.
Buska?
Yes.
Fortune?
Yes.
Greenard?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned.